Okay, it's 6:33 on April 25th. A call to order of the Webster Planning Board. First order of business is approval of the meeting minutes, which I just got and didn't have a chance to read through. Can we put it off till next time, or do we have to do something?
Uh...
I know January's are a little late, but can it wait till next meeting? Because...
And these came out, you know, to you all last week, so yeah.
Yeah, I just didn't get to it today, that was all.
Yeah, and Chuck's got some edits too, that he just submitted, so I can get the revised draft to you all.
Okay, thank you. Site plan endorsement for 64 Worcester Road?
I've spoken and I've to Chuck, and he can fill you in a little bit more. They're not ready for endorsement, they're close, but they won't, they're not ready until May.
Do you want more information? They're just...
I assume it's the DOT issue?
They're going back and forth with DOT on the sidewalks, and I think they have the driveway apron squared away, but they're still talking about the sidewalks.
Okay. So that's put off till next meeting as well? 32 Point Pleasant Road, Deborah Coonan?
Yes, this is, and just so that folks are in the room, if anybody's here for 70 Bates Point Road, they've requested a continuance, so if you don't want to sit through all of this. This is a Chapter 91, a Chapter 91 permit. I'm trying to get to the plan. This is what's being proposed at 32 Point Pleasant Road. These appear on your agenda as an opportunity for the public to provide input, which then gets catalogued in a memo along with any submissions that were received with your comments. This is not a public hearing, this is just an opportunity for the public to speak to the matter and to make record of it to be passed on to Mass D E P. So this is the, this is the doc that's being proposed. And I don't know if there's anyone here to speak to it. It's not a public hearing, so people aren't notified.
I understand. I know the process now.
Yeah.
Yeah, it looks like they've done everything as best as they can, so you try to get it in the middle. Just come up and give your name and...
My name's Karen Bartholomew.
Actually, if you could just sit down so she can hear it when they record, please.
Turn the mic on.
Yeah, the mic's not...
Hey.
Okay. My name is Karen Bartholomew, I live at 32 Point Pla, 30 Point Pleasant Road.
Yep.
On the other to Ms. Coonan. This has been an ongoing problem for many years. On Point Pleasant, where I live, we're in a cove.
Hmm?
On the right side.
Yep.
My property, Anne, if you don't mind?
We can get back to the drawing, hold on.
If you can put up the plan, Albert Colas' plan?
Yep, okay. All right.
What happened was, at some point in time, don't know the timeframe, I own a pie, it's exactly a pie, and the point of my pie hits the shore. But my neighbor on the right and the neighbor on the left, I'm not saying that they did it, but at some point in time, a whole bunch of fill ended up in the cove. So now my point that is supposed to be on the water...
Yep.
Is about 14 feet upland. So what happened is, the neighbor on the right, their land came in front of my land, the neighbor on the left, Coonan, her land came in front of my land, and it's filled land. And I have a statement from the town assessor, Mr. Becker, saying that she doesn't own the land, she doesn't pay taxes on the land. We have a stamped plan, actually that the applicant applied for, that says she, it's filled inland, therefore she doesn't own it. And the application that Mr. Lane or Ms. Coonan filled out misrepresents the property lines entirely. So if you see, I marked that up. If you don't mind, I'll show you.
Yep.
This is my point.
Actually, we can't see that one, so you can come on this one. Actually, in front, we have one here.
And turn the microphone around so that the audio can pick you up, yes.
Sorry. Very complex here, huh?
Okay. So what happens is, see that?
Yeah.
That's my point.
Okay.
So it's me.
Yep.
And this point is common to Ms. Coonan and the Amir family. That point has been identified in the early 1900s as a point on the shore of the cove.
Mm-hmm.
Nothing has changed. But what has happened was, at some point in time, somebody filled in the land, they filled in the land. So I realize that my point that was supposed to be on the water now is 14 feet away from the water. The problem here now is, she has fenced in this filled inland, which I, I've already reported that to the town, and the fence viewer has given her three notices to remove that fence because it's not her property. By default, it's either property owned by the Department of Environmental Protection, depending on whether it be the High Water Month here, or it's property owned by the town, and the town has authority over it. So she, she can't fence us in. Plus, because it's public lands, it's open to the public, it's subject to the public doctrine.
Mm-hmm.
So this has been an ongoing process. So she not only has it fenced in, now she's applying for a doc to connect to land that's not hers, and you know that's not the first time it's occurred on the lake. And you can't apply for a doc to connect to state land because you don't own it, unless you have legislative action that allows you to go on that land. That land has to be open to everybody. So that's why I'm here, because first of all, what Mr. Lane or Deborah submitted was completely wrong. It misrepresented the property lines entirely. This is not question or my opinion, this is a fact. You know, the assessor spoke to it, the fence viewer spoke to it, and the deeds define it as I'm showing you. So because it's a cove, and things didn't have to be this way, I have a boat. You want to pull the boat into the cove? Well, what the neighbors do is, this thing like a ball, you know, rowboats, drawn boats and everything, around this piece of the cove, and then she takes this and puts a jet speed rail over there so that I can't even walk into the water even if I wanted to. I said, hey, can you push it down a little bit? And she said no. I said, can you push it down a little bit? And she said no. So I said, well, this is really... Because if you even own any of this, and I have the right to pull up a boat, and she said, come get me. So that's who we are.
Okay.
What was the purpose of them filling in that, in the first place?
I don't know. I've owned the property 18 years, and if you talk to people that have been around the lake, they said it happened quite some time ago, but because people just want to expand their land, and it was a cove, so it's easy to fill in a cove. I mean, look at Loveland, on the right side, it's all filled, because it's shallow, and they get bigger yards, you know? Don't forget, back then, I'm not sure if the Wetlands Protection Act was being fully enforced. And nobody's going to ask them to remove it, because it's more of a disturbance if you remove it. So once it exists, you don't get to own it as a private party. It's illegal, you can't own filled inland.
But you don't know when it was filled in?
No.
Was it filled in when you moved in?
It was already there, yeah. Filled inland historically, at this point in time, remains in place, because to take it away, especially because there's actually a wall here, to make the landowner who's responsible, to make the landowner remove a wall and regrade, causes probably more sediment, more problems, you know, you have to rip out a wall, you have to regrade. D E P is not going to ask for that to happen. But what happens is, is people inherently think that it's theirs. It's not, it's open to the public. And you can't apply for a license to connect to public, to, to the land owned by D E P at the time.
Okay. Okay, well, this format gave you a position to get it on the record before it goes back to D E P for their review. We really don't have the ability to do anything about it, other than make sure that it's in the record and brought to D E P's attention. So we will do that, correct?
And Mr. Chairman, you'll see on the screen that a number of, a number of attachments are, will be included with your memo, which is all the documentation that Ms. Bartholomew has submitted.
Okay. Thank you. There's no action for us, right, Anne?
Nope.
Other than making sure that's part of the record?
Yeah, I mean, you, you don't, it doesn't require an action, but staff will...
Yes.
Submit something to Mass D E P outlining the proceedings.
The public hearing for 70 Bates Road is postponed till June?
Uh, would, May.
May.
You don't even have to open the hearing, you can just announce it'll be postponed until May 23rd.
Till May 23rd at this point, and then we'll see where we are from there.
Yeah.
Order mitigation, I see their attorney is lurking outside the door there.
Uh, did you want to do the gas station, or are you going to do that later?
I figured we'd get that out of, the odor mitigation out of the way, just because it really shouldn't take long. You're up.
Oh, we are, sorry.
Get off your phone, come on. You're holding up a lot of good people here.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Um, just kind of touch base today, so I think I'm opposite of Curaleaf, just giving you an update of what they've done. So since our last meeting, we did have the town administrator walk through. We've installed 30 Defender units to all the walls, ionizing machines, they've sealed all the internal pods inside each room. There's a six-week lead time for the VFD devices, which are the variable, ultimately just work with the devices on the fans so they can control how often they're working, and there's a six-week lead time on the UV systems that they're actually going to put into the duct work. So at this point, they've done everything that they can, up to just waiting for deliverables. The one question we have is, I believe Richard Young's been providing Anne with a weekly update. Since there's now a lead time between what's been done and when we can actually start doing more installations, we're just asking if we can change that from a weekly update to a monthly update, because there's not going to be much update between now and then.
Okay.
That's entirely up to you. I would just recommend that if they're going to go to a monthly update, that those updates are received prior to your next meeting, at least a couple of days, so that you'll have a chance to see it before your next meeting. They have been very, very responsive. I've been getting the updates, you know?
Yeah.
The smell is better, I did catch a few whiffs coming into town the other day, but it's significantly better, and it's at the discretion of the board.
Yeah, I think it's exponentially better, although on Saturday for some, or Friday night, for some reason, it was awful.
Yeah.
I have no idea.
I thought it too.
I think it's going to be, it's really going to be weather dependent, I think that's what we've kind of seen, but we do believe that once we can put the actual devices into the duct work, on the lab areas, for example, those are out, they're just venting out right now.
Yep.
So getting those items into those ventilations will stop a lot of the over there. But they're also now at the good weather, they can go in and see if there's any pressurized points that they can seal...
Okay.
In the expansion on the second phase of their project.
I don't think anyone on the board has an issue with you going monthly, as long as it's submitted a week before the meeting?
Before.
Is that fair, Anne?
Mr. Chairman, just for the record...
Yes.
I want to state that I toured the facility on the 21st with Mr. Young, and I concur with counsel that they've done a lot to try to seal the facility, to take action. There is, you know, we, one small thing they probably could do was, I think Paul, you also toured the facility, but there is a slight gap underneath the doors in several rooms. If you go in there, it's broken into pods, kind of where, where they, where they do the different stages of growing. And I was very impressed with what, how responsive Curaleaf has been and their plan. And I think, you know, working in manufacturing, getting equipment in, I believe those HVAC units for the, the quality control and where they're processing the oil, those are coming in from Europe, so anything that's coming in from overseas is, right now, it's extremely difficult. So I'd encourage, you know, anyone who hasn't seen the facility to contact, you know, Richard Young, take an hour, go through the facility, you won't get high just by looking at the marijuana. You'll, you'll see more than you've ever wanted to see in your life, but it's, it's, it is quite interesting, I, so...
Yeah, the tour's worth it, yeah.
It really is.
It's being the life cycle now.
Life cycle, yeah.
Okay. You good with the reporting?
Yeah, I'll let them know, I'll get to you at least a week prior to the meeting, and hopefully by then, we can have a better idea of where things stand on the...
And the doors will be done by then, so...
Yeah.
I'll let them know that.
Yeah, that was just something we saw quickly, just looking around and...
Okay.
It should be easy fix, I'm trying to find a solution for it.
Nothing's easy.
(laughing).
Thank you, Nick.
Perfect. Thank you guys very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're at site plan application for 137 East Main.
I'll defer to Chuck to provide the bulk of the staff update. What I, what I can tell you and remind you is that this is going to require two decisions. One is going to be a special permit for the signage. Nothing's looking out of the ordinary on that, and that decision, if you decide to close the hearing for the special permit, we can have that decision ready for the next meeting. And then Chuck has just a couple of minor comments to be made, and if I'm wrong, correct me, but I think the site plan's ready to go too. So...
Yeah, so the site plan comments have been addressed. The lingering comments are really, are just with the traffic report and getting the traffic report buttoned up, and I don't expect that to really impact the, the site plan.
Okay. Gentlemen?
Thank you, good evening, Jesse Cokely with Colliers Engineering. Anne, if you can put up Exhibit 28, that's just the latest site plan.
Okay.
After the last meeting, I believe the town was going to meet with DPW and the police to talk about what could be done about the accidents in the area at the intersection.
Which they did.
Which they did. I then spoke with Chuck to kind of go over some modifications to the driveway entrance on Worcester. It's now that typical concrete pork chop to make it a right-in, right-out only driveway. So that has been addressed, the rest of Chuck's site comments has been addressed. We did include a truck turn that shows the truck coming in off East Main, looping through and exiting on East Main. The lingering comments remain just some traffic report cleanup, I'll call it. One of them is a request to include an accident analysis. The results of that accident analysis aren't going to change anything on the site, or really anything that's under our control. We did get total accident counts from the police department last week. We've gone back to ask if they can give us maybe some more detail, exactly where they occurred, maybe what their reasoning was in the police report, to see if there is anything else that can be done, but mostly this, like the site plan, we don't expect to change as a result of that. So...
Was that a request from your meeting?
No, it was a request that we had when we were reviewing the traffic report.
Okay.
So that the traffic report would be complete, and...
So we have background data, and that way we know what it is, so that if it gets worse, because these guys are selling too much gas, we'll know why?
(laughing).
Okay.
Well, I think it was also because the, the traffic study doesn't specifically mention that right-in, right-out, and that, that's a result to help, based on our discussions about the accidents that we anecdotally hear...
Gotcha.
Left-hand turn, so we just want to put that in the formal document, I think.
Was that it?
That's, that's pretty much it, I think. There were some appendix items in the traffic report which we can, which we can update, but...
Okay.
That's pretty much it.
And it is important to have an accurate traffic report, believe it or not, you know, sometime when we're all, you know, sipping pina coladas in the south, somebody might pick up that traffic report, it might mean something important for somebody in the future. So you could close the hearing, I can develop the draft decisions. If the revised traffic report has not been submitted by the time of the next meeting, then the site plan approval decision can be put on hold. You will have to act on the special permit for the signage, but again, two separate physical decisions, and the special permit is statutorily bound. Kathy Cody is going to have to do a Mullen certification to ensure she watches the video from this little hearing, so that she'll be eligible to vote. So I, I have faith that Jesse and his crew will get that corrected, and it'll pass what's ever needed from Chuck's team, to have that decision go forward in May.
Okay. Does anybody else on the board have any questions or comments? No? In that case, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing for 137 East Main.
I'm making a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now I'll need a motion to direct Anne to create a...
Draft decision.
Draft decision, sorry. Mine's gone. Or to draft a decision, not to create a draft decision.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any other discussion regarding the decision? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Perfect.
Thank you very much.
Good luck with your traffic report.
Thank you. Oh, Jesse, when you get a chance, I have, I have been trying to put my hands on, I can't seem to find the images we showed at the last meeting with the sign package.
Okay.
I'm not anticipating any problems at all, but if you could resend that, that would be helpful.
Will be lovely.
Thank you.
Next item, I believe, is you, Anne?
Yes, okay. For, I don't know if any of you were contacted by tie-in bond about the fact that the town had got a grant to do a municipal vulnerability preparedness plan, which deals with all things climate change related, and how it impacts municipal facilities, and, and people, and economies, and infrastructure. They had set up a whole system where we all had to, senior staff all had to go and spend four hours. Actually, Pat Dougherty showed up, he was identified as somebody who might have some knowledge that would be helpful in the process. So now that they've collected the information and reached out to stakeholders, you were all listed as stakeholders potentially, being able to add to that info, don't know if they called you, but now they're required to have a public listening session, where they have to come in to a meeting such as this, that is being broadcast to the YouTube channel to let people know what the plan is and what the recommendations are, and they're asking for time on your agenda for the next meeting. The presentation will probably take 20 minutes, then questions, so, you know, I would recommend to them no more than a half an hour. That's a lot of time on your agenda. If that doesn't work for the board, then I will work with them for setting up a meeting specific here at Town Hall for just that. But you might find it interesting. Things like solar and the, certainly the wireless communication towers. One of our most primary towers is on the police station, which happens to be in a flood plain. That could be a problem if the French River floods and that communications tower is taken down. So, you know, I sat with the group that included highway and fire and whatnot, so the recommendations are going to be good, but it's their opportunity to present and to meet that requirement by the state to have a public listening session. So I wanted to know from you if you would like it on your agenda, or if I should schedule something separately.
No, I think it's fine, if we could do, you should probably do it first, though.
Okay. Perfect. That's all I needed, I'll let them know.
Or if we do it at the end, they probably won't drag it on as long.
(laughing). Like you said, we'll give them a fixed period of time.
Yeah.
And unless there's something that's extraordinarily important to you.
Perfect. I'll have them submit the presentation a week in advance, so you'll have a chance to review it before they come in, because you might have questions. You certainly might have input.
Okay, awesome.
Okay.
This may be a world record.
Wow.
Oh, this is cool. You want us to do some conservation work while we're here?
How about some Chapter 91 licenses? They're fun.
Yeah.
You're up.
You're just begging me to say something bad. Updates, Chuck, the weekend?
Engineering-wise, Goya is moving right along, they have topsoil put down on their stormwater basin, and the site's looking pretty good. In fact, they probably are going to start putting steel up this week. They haven't already.
Yeah.
So, the other thing, and I don't know how much you want to talk about this, but the United Medical site, they had started clearing, I guess I'll call it, and so I took a bunch of pictures and shared them with Anne. They, they pretty much cleared the site, so I believe the town gave them a cease and desist, and they're waiting for their final approval, so...
Chuck, how about just below the hill, at the bottom of the hill?
Chris Lynch.
Somebody did some, all that work, there's something else.
The other, the other thing I took a look at was the, the original United Medical site, which is like right in and around the optical...
Oh, yeah.
Plaza there. So yeah, it's, it's very odd, they have put a lot of fill in the front of the parcel, and then they've totally leveled out the rear of the parcel. So, and I, I shared pictures of that as well, and I don't know what, obviously, you know, they have grade sticks and everything in the front, so they're grading to some plan, I don't know which plan or what plan, but, so...
How about all, all Webster Road?
It looks like they're starting to work over there.
While they put in utilities and stuff, have they done inspection there?
It was a big hole.
I, no. All right, I'll have to, I'll have to swing by there.
It's a giant hole.
Yeah, as far as, and I will upload the photos for you to see, the conservation agent, and actually the Conservation Commission is slapping fines on them, because what the photo Chuck and I took back behind the old optical during the first round in 2019, as they left it, because they were going to proceed with a different site, is significantly different than what's happened out there. And they tried to tell Ted Tatro that, oh, that, that's exactly how United Medical left it, and we pulled up the picture and went...
It wasn't clear all the way to 390.
I don't think so. They are in violation of the stormwater bylaw. We will be issuing a enforcement order on that this week. United Medical now, at 64 Worcester, sent their guys out there to do some site work, which violated a whole bunch of other things. I sent out an email saying, you might be in violation of your site plan approval, and you better stop now, and they stopped, and Chuck took some pictures, but that was not pretty either, so...
Yeah, you may want to check the storm basins and stuff at all, Webster Road, because...
Yeah.
Supposed to call you by now, but they haven't.
They're just putting stuff on the top, why'd they dig the big holes in there? Don't know.
Well, they pushed stuff within, would you say, a foot of the wetland or something?
Those would just be storage buildings, right? Stuff they rental for storage, yeah.
No idea. You know, is that it?
That's it.
That's it. Anne, do you need to...
Yeah, I got one last thing for you. I did process an administrative approval for some swap-out of equipment at 6 Goya. Then they list the address as 6 Goya, it's really Zero Goya, because there's no house structure on there. So they met all the requirements, and, you know, I had always told you that when I processed those, I would let you know, in case someone asked.
What are they doing at the...
What are they doing at the lot in front of that?
I have not seen.
Have been any activity?
Oh, no. No, I've heard nothing, no.
Which lot? Which lot?
Up on Goya.
U-Haul's moving ahead too.
You're talking about the lot right at the road where the logging operation was?
Yeah, well, they had problems before. I thought somebody said...
We heard, yeah, we heard a, a company that's involved in paving was going to go in there, but we haven't seen anything.
I've seen their trucks there, but I haven't seen any other...
Yeah, I've seen them parking trucks there, but that's...
Yeah.
That's all I've seen.
Okay.
And we haven't had any complaints from the neighbors lately.
That's good.
That's it.
Okay. Anything else? Anyone? In that case, we will break every record as the fastest meeting ever. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Microphones off, please.
Good job, Kim.
Will you turn off the equipment? Jason, did you see my text message? Okay.